Yeah.
Um, okay, can I, are you, are you using the computer audio?
Okay, can I, are you, are you using the computer audio?
Cause I might suggest that you, um, go out and come back in using the phone audio.
Okay, is that better?
Oh, that's much better. Perfect. Perfect. Great.
Okay, is that better?
Um, after the meeting, I'll ask you what you did to make that happen. But anyway.
Um, hi.
Oh, no, Ja- Justin, go ahead. Say, say again what you did.
Um, hi, I'm Jackson. I'm the DSC rep to this committee and I use he/him pronouns.
Hi, I'm Parkamyrus. I am, I represent Benson on the District Student Council. Oh, my pronoun is he/him.
And I'm Jillian and I represent Roosevelt on the District Student Council and I use she/her pronouns.
Okay. Um, is there anybody else?
Okay.
Um, is there anybody else? All right, and then, um, as, um, staff people. I'm sorry, what?
Nathaniel's here as well.
I'm sorry, what? Oh, Nathaniel, you here?
Yeah, hi. Sorry, I joined a bit late.
Okay.
Yeah, hi.
Um, you wanna say who you are?
Yeah, I'm Nathaniel Chu. I'm from Jefferson and I'm the student rep to the board.
Okay. Thank you. Um, okay, and I'm gonna ask, uh, any staff who talks, if you can just introduce yourself before you launch into your presentation, that would be helpful. Okay, so, um, um, we have some status updates on some, uh, policies that are out for community engagement. Um, and I think the first one is the, uh, suicide prevention policy.
Yes, I can speak to that one. Um, uh, the team that was working on it in Rona, um, and her team, um, met with Shanice in July. They recognized, oh, Jesus, she can speak to us well. Um, part of the engagement they wanna do is more student engagement and, um, they were given that. It was the summer, it was a, it, that, it was a difficult time and so, um, they are asking to meet with us in September and to develop a, uh, and their intention is to develop a fuller, uh, engagement plan through the fall.
Okay. Um, so that we, so the staff will, will get together to talk about the engagement plan?
Correct.
Will you be able to come back to the committee at the next meeting and report on what the engagement plan is for that? Just so we can keep them moving? Is that enough time?
Um, I'm gonna, um, turn to Shanice and ask her if she thinks that's enough time, uh, in three weeks.
Well, I think so. Three busy weeks, so I, I wanna be, well, time isn't the best.
What is it?
I, I wanna be three very busy weeks.
Right, what is it?
I, I wanna be three very busy weeks.
That's, um, I, I'm seeing Amy as our, our staff lead, um, so I can absolutely check in with Amy to gauge where, where she's at with that and provide some support where, where she's at with that and provide some support.
Um, can you, when you get some clarity on that, can you let me know? So that we know whether to put it on the agenda for the next meeting or not? Yes, okay. Okay, thank you. Um, yes, okay. Okay, and, um, uh, okay, and, yeah.
Can I just ask a question about that?
Um,
just about the engagement. Are we engaging, um, with, uh, Lines for Life? Are they having, um, a whole, like, youth, uh, lines for life and everything? I'm just wondering if that's part of our overall plan and everything. I'm just wondering if that's engagement.
I can't speak to that, although I, um, I know that, uh, in my conversations with Amy, they've referenced that, um, uh, Lines for Life, and so I wouldn't be surprised if they haven't already reached out. They've talked about it at the la- at the last meeting. I'm not recalling exactly which, uh, organizations they have been talking to, but, um, if not, I will ask them.
Shanice might have some information on that.
Yes.
So, to my understanding, they've been working with some local, regional, and state partners, and so we can, uh, and, and the process of getting that plan to you all, um, make sure we, they articulate the organizations they intend to reach, um, as well.
Great. I just know a lot of our students are involved in sort of the youth component of Lines for Life.
Okay, thanks. Um, okay, the next policy we're getting a status update on is the student conduct and discipline. And Liz?
Yes, uh, Liz Larch, um, district, uh, general counsel for the district. Um, the, it's, it's a short one because it's the same one we've had before. We are needing to, um, engage in some bargaining with PAT on this and the related student handbook and those connected pieces. And frankly, everything, uh, that's not been about the start of school, uh, in terms of reentry in that MOU has been put on, uh, it's not been forgotten, but it is coming later in the queue. So it's very much still on the agenda, but the terms and conditions of reopening school have been, uh, at the forefront. So that's where the bargaining efforts have been taking place.
Liz, does that mean the handbook is going for the twenty-one, twenty, no, twenty-twenty-one school year going to be the, the same as last year?
I don't believe so. So one of the changes is that it's gonna be digital instead of hard copy, right? So this, this pressure to have everything in place at a date certain that you can't change for a year is off this year and hopefully going forward. And Mary, I don't know if you have the specific information about that part of the handbook. Um, I, I don't believe that we are currently going to publish in the fall of twenty what was published in the fall of nineteen on that issue because of the demand of bargain, but I wanna make sure.
That's my understanding. They have, they have a book, handbook, um, but they're, uh, they're waiting to get some information about the, uh, the negotiation. So to see whether, what pieces need to be amended, what, if any, pieces need to be amended.
So a question about that. So I think psychologically, we've spent so much time on this, and it seems like a long time ago, that I'm thinking like, oh, we're already there, but actually we're back to our previous policy. And I know in even some of, um, since some discipline that got all the way to the board, I wanna say that we rely, we're relying on future thinking of like, here's where we're heading. Future thinking of like, here's where we're heading. And this is just, this is a multiple question. So just to be clear, even though we went here, we're almost done, actually what's going to apply to students is what is the current policy.
To, to the extent the current policy does not violate state law, right? And, and policy and collective bargaining agreement, and there was been some statutory changes in part. So certainly we will comply with state law regardless of contract or policies. Um, and I think the practices that have been in place are far more, and, and I think without necessarily violating the policy, I think the practices are very much oriented towards the future trajectory, is my understanding.
Okay, great.
So this may be impractical. Um, are there parts of the policy, the draft policy, that we could, uh, approve now, or is it sort of of the whole cloth in terms of what needs to be negotiated?
I, I think that's a good question, Scott, that I can't answer with precision because I hadn't looked at it, uh, with that lens bef- right before this meeting. What we generally find, though, is that the, the policy and the handbook and the collective bargaining agreement, that safety provision, Article Nine, I think it is, it's, they're all connected together, it's, and it's hard to pick off parts of it. Now, there may be parts of the policy that are, that don't relate to Article Nine specifically that we might be able, that the board could adopt. But I don't know that it's gonna be satisfying to do that. I mean, I'm speaking from general memory, not going line by, change by change, because some of the real, the, the crux of the changes and what's behind the changes is what's in conflict with parts of Article Nine.
Thanks. I, I, I wouldn't be surprised if that were true.
Yeah.
So can I make a request? Um, so at the next, or, uh, the next committee meeting, um, I, I would like the committee to talk about, um, kind of a, a work plan for, for the twenty-twenty-one year, um, where we, to the extent we can, identify policies that we're, we're intending to tackle this year. Um, so that's three weeks from now. Um, I have no idea whether there are gonna be any negotiations between now and then. Um, but, to the extent possible, could you, um, for that discussion at the next meeting, give us your best estimate on, um, how extensive the revisions might, like what portions of the policy are in dispute? And any, any insight you can give us going forward about how we're gonna be able to handle this during the year?
Yes, um, I, I think by the next meeting, school have started, so presumably the reentry negotiations are done. I know that they are meeting again. I've heard big chunk of Thursday and I heard all day Friday. I don't know if s- someone gave from two different people, but at least one big chunk later this week, and I know they are making very good progress. So I think they will get to the safety Article Nine provision, which was, ha- has thus far been talked about as being separate from full contract bargaining, which is, will also be happening. But I will give you an update on that as these, as the two sides have been talking, they may have changed that menu as well, but I all know that. So yes, very fair request.
What, whatever info you have available three weeks from now would be helpful, um, as we try to plan out the work. Um, okay, uh, so that's it for the status update. Um, the next, the next section is, um, uh, policies or items up for discussion. And the first, first in line there is, um, the, a, a discussion of the community engagement plant, planning process. Um, and, um, hopefully everybody got a chance to read the user guide. Um, and embedded in that was also the community engagement project planning worksheet, um, as well as some other links to things. So is Shanice going to be speaking to this, or who, who's gonna be speaking to this?
Rita, this, this is Rachel Lent. Um, I'm a paralegal in the general counsel's office. And, um, I'll just get started and have Shanice jump in, um, on her parts. We worked together on this document and it was, it was written to create a, an intentional and formulated process for writing policy, giving staff guidelines and expectations, uh, so that when a policy or an administrative directive comes to the board or, or the superintendent, um, all of the boxes have been addressed and checked and it's an, it's, it's an intentional process. So the, in, in creating this document, I worked with, uh, Jonathan Garcia, Danny, Shanice, um, the general counsel's office, and this has been, uh, reviewed and vetted through the senior leadership team. Um, so hopefully you've had a chance to look at it a little bit, and I'll just kind of walk through, uh, the phases and, and, uh, it, it includes, um, overall guidelines, and then we created four specific phases, um, in the development planning of, of policy writing. So, um, I'll have Shanice talk about phase one, um, which is the planning phase, and includes, uh, guy, guidance for staff to use the RESJ lens, develop a community engagement plan. Um, Shanice developed a pretty comprehensive worksheet to assist staff in that process. And, um, I'll have you, Shanice, I'll have you talk, talk about it.
Shanice, but before you start, can I, can I just say just a little bit by way of introduction about kind of the origins of this? Um, so I, I know, I know Rachel, um, has been working on something like this for over a year, I think, right?
Yeah.
Something like that. Um, and, and kind of the, the origins of this was, um, uh, a recognition that this committee in particular, in the board in general, this committee in particular, didn't have, um, a, a pre-existing methodology for, um, soliciting uh, input on the policy process. Um, and as a result, uh, we ended up, more often than not, having an input process, some kind of community engagement process, um, happening well into the, uh, the revision process. You know, the committee had more often than not, um, already considered, uh, and made some preliminary decisions about revisions or creating policies. Um, and then at the very, at the back end, we would try to solicit some input. Um, so what, what Rachel was trying to do, um, starting at least a year ago, um, and, and in particular in response to some of the, uh, some lobbying by student representatives, especially Maxine Lattarelle last year. Um, uh, the, the staff, uh, wi- with my encouragement, and I know other board members as well, um, really tried to come up with a system, a protocol, that would put the community engagement on the front end rather than the back end. Um, so, um, and I, I know that, uh, Rachel came up with the original draft a while back, and then over the last few months, I think it's been a, I think it was pre-COVID, actually, wasn't it?
It was.
Yeah, um, so there was a process to make it, to elaborate the protocol, um, much more explicitly. Um, and with the idea that if we, if we can figure out some, some sort of rules of the road around, um, how community engagement and the policymaking process can intersect, that it will make the policymaking process, um, more responsive. Um, it'll bring different perspectives to the table that would otherwise be absent. And hopefully will make the, the whole process of, of, you know, chewing over policies, making revisions, and then bringing them to adoption much more, uh, much shorter, uh, more timely, um, and so that we can kind of make the changes that we need to make in a timely way. Okay, so that's, that's the intro. Um, if, if either you or Shanice wanna add anything to that, feel free. But, um, I, for, for the newbies to the committee, I especially wanted to make sure that you've kind of understood the context.
Yeah, that's, that's right, Rita, and, and to make it intentional and thoughtful and, you know, um, transparent and multiple perspectives at the beginning, which is why, um, this is phase one, and I'll have Shanice talk a little bit about that.
Um, you all summed that up pretty well. I think the, the intent is to hold space for, uh, input from students, families, and community, uh, at the forefront of, of these processes. And as we grapple with policies that need to be, um, written or revised, um, to think about the phase one process of that revision. Um, also using our, our racial equity lens, um, but also marrying, uh, key steps and considerations to, to garner, um, any areas of input or revision that, that are also of interest to, to folks, um, externally. So I think, um, there, there are four phases, but, uh, depending, um, on, on the policy, you'll see a different level of, uh, engagement or a different approach. And, uh, so, uh, my, myself, uh, and, and this great team here will serve as a resource to folks who will, uh, serve as the policyholders, uh, for, for these policies that go under review. And will, uh, provide that, uh, technical support as needed to, uh, to folks who are, are doing that work and looking to them to really, walk through each of these phases, um, with, with the engagement and then creating, um, that plan, um, and using that plan to, uh, propose outcomes in, in language to share back to you all. I'm getting a knock at my door, so I'm a little distracted. Um, so, um, I think that summarizes it. Uh, the, the context was set.
So, uh, I have a question. Um, and it has to do with lines of authority. So say, uh, a policy comes up for review. Uh, Shanice, do you then prepare an outreach plan related to that policy and bring it to the committee for approval?
So we're looking to our policyholders, um, who are ultimately the ones, uh, drafting that language and, and driving the work of policy revision to, to also, um, incorporate input into those policies. So, uh, the support in creating that plan, um, is something that we'll provide to them. And, uh, created worksheet tools, steps, guides, protocols, and a number of other resources for staff to be able to build that muscle, for, uh, for their own, uh, search sort of policies that they're holding. So maybe not looking to, uh, myself to facilitate everything that comes before you, but to provide that technical support and, uh, really attention, uh, to making sure that the policy, uh, revision process, um, is moving to your, your roles, uh, your standards and the things that you, uh, are suggesting are, are critical as we move along. So I, I perceive that to be, um, where we are, and, and this user guide, um, really serving as a tool to support, um, the, um, the real infrastructure of, of this process to be sustainable, um, and, uh, as we, as we move along.
And I think, um, sorry, I was just gonna add to, I agree a hundred percent with what Shanice so eloquently said. And some of the feedback we get from the policyholders who are, have functional oversight or subject matter expertise is that they, um, they find the process and the expectations a little, they have found them ambiguous and confusing. And so I, I really applaud Shanice and Rachel for this work to try to make clear what the expectations are. But to Shanice's ultimate point, it is not to take over the ownership, it's to be pretty robust supports to help them, um, along the way.
Okay, so what I was gonna say first was to take a step back and say what I should have started with, which is, thank you. This is great, and this is something, I'm one of the board members who's been bringing this up, that we need from the get-go to have that community outreach process, uh, before we start looking at changing language. Um, so thank you, this is great work. Um, and so let me my, ask my question again, because I didn't understand who policyholders are.
So, um, oh, go ahead. So.
So let's start with that one first.
So our intention is to publish this right on the staff resources page of the board's webpage, so that when we hear about someone's coming to us, that's often how it happens, is there's been a legislative change or, um, I wanna revise this policy, then they will automatically be directed to this user guide to begin their work and start reviewing that guide, asking questions, developing the engagement plan. Um, and so, for example, you know, Amy Ruona is the subject matter expert on the suicide prevention policy. So Amy would be guided to this document to start her work in connection with the tools and support that people like Shanice and I can provide. Um, Claire may be working on a, a, a policy. Um, she will, she and her staff will be using that same guide to formulate their work. So those, when we say policyholder, those are the experts that will be bringing this eventually to your committee.
And I think policy, policy owner is some of the phrasing that we've used. Um, but it, I mean, the board owns the policies, to be clear. The board, they are the board's policies. But there is subject matter expertise that resides in the district, who are the people who are implementing the policy and work in the arena of the policy the most tend to be the ones who should shepherd that work through to help guide the board in its policymaking.
So, so I think it would be, it would keep things clear to use terminology along those lines, so staff policy expert. This policyholder is like, well, everybody, there's, there in the entire districts and public's policies in that sense. Um, but, and, and secondly, uh, so I'm trying to, trying to follow this work stream. Um, and there's, there's a couple of different ways that we start to consider a policy, and one is, like, there's a change in statute. Does that come to this body first to say, yeah, we need to change it, and then to the policy expert? And from there, and Liz is shaking her head.
Yeah, not, not necessarily, right? Because I think you should expect, uh, the substantive, um, content experts and the legal department, uh, and the government relations department to be on top of what's coming down the pike from the state or, or feds and to be working to address those quickly. So it, it, we have taken a general charge from the committee, and we can do it differently if, if you all direct us to, that our policies need to comply with law. And so we, um, we moved to that.
I'm all for breaking the law, so.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, it's all the rage these days, anyway. Uh, no, that's, that's, that's not what I, I guess, meant, but it would.
Oh, okay.
It would, eh, well, it, it partly, I, eh, would, would not cost anybody much of anything to do a, by the way, statute changed, need to change policy X, working on it. Uh, just, just, uh, something to Rita, along those lines.
We, and we try to make that, that visible as well. We don't, we don't wait to start our work until we've had a meeting every three weeks necessarily, so, but it's, but we have, um, at the end of a legislative session, I think we do a table, these are the changes, these are the policies, these are the effective dates. Sometimes they'll be enacted as of July one, but they won't be effective until the following January. We try to prioritize over time. But it is mo- we most definitely want the committee to have visibility to what's, what's being worked on. And I'm, I'm sure there are ways we can improve that because it's, you know, things are flying in all directions, but you should expect that of us.
Okay.
Can I just follow on that, Scott? Wouldn't it just be dropped onto the committee work plan? I mean, just to Rita's earlier point, if we have a work plan for the year, it's just, you know, these are ones that automatically get on because they're statutory changes, and then we all just know that, like, hey, somebody's got it because it's on the, on the list. because it's on the list.
Right. We just haven't had the formality of a work plan recently. But I think I really support Rita's effort to have that built for this year. And that we keep a running list of policies that are being worked on that we have on draft agendas so that there's visibility or what we hear is coming. But it should absolutely be in a work plan without a doubt.
I'm also wondering if community members, if they wanted to propose a policy, are they required to put together this engagement plan also? Or is it just staff?
I think it's just staff. I mean, we have, we, working with the, trying to understand the interests in what the proposal is and taking the direction from the policy committee on how they want, how they want, how the committee members want it to be handled. But I think we would, we do not, we don't tell or instruct community members what to do. And I think frankly, we own the engagement with the community to pursue the interests of the policy committee itself, which is in service to many other things. But I think that's where we take our direction from. But that is a path for policies to be proposed. You're absolutely right.
So my second question had to do with the committee's oversight in terms of engagement. Because while I think staff and board members and students are in principle pretty aligned in terms of the principles of community engagement, there are going to be times where we're not completely. And there's possibilities of something getting pretty far down the line. And here's what we did for engagement and for student members or board members to go, whoa, 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 whoa. Did you talk to X? Did you talk to Y? Why did he only talk to Z? Kind of a thing. And to me, this work is, and this is a gray area of, you know, the board's only supposed to oversee the superintendent. But this outreach work is in support, direct support of the board's work rewriting policy. So it would seem like, and be glad to know if I'm wrong, that the board needs to put a stamp of approval on the outreach process for a particular policy rewrite before it gets very far down the track. And I can see in some cases, there's a change in statute. The outreach is going to be pretty minimal because we have to change sentence wise to read differently. But in other cases, especially where we're kind of voluntarily taking up a policy to rewrite it, it can get complicated. So I'm just wondering how. I think we need to come to an understanding for how that's going to work so that we don't get into an actual policy rewrite and get it loggerheads. Does that make sense?
Yeah, Scott, actually, I'd just build on that a little bit more in the sense that, I guess, I'd say thanks for putting this together. I think it's a good framework for discussion. But I do think, actually more than just approving the engagement, is like, I, especially, I mean, some policies that I think are pretty straightforward and there's not really like two opposing sides or there's not different perspectives. It probably is fine just to look at the engagement strategy and like, yes, you know, get the summary back. But other things, other times, I'm going to want to hear the actual voices and the arguments and the information in order to make decisions on, you know, where to land on a policy in which there's two legitimate pathways to go.
Or three or four.
Yeah, because I, and look at this, it's a little bit, it's, I think the policymaking process is a little bit messier than this is. Like, so, because I think it says at one point that the community engagement, like PPS gains insight that positively impacts policy, you know, by going through these, you know, community engagements. But board members are, you know, first of all, we bring lived experiences. We're in a whole host of different stakeholder communities. I just think there's going to be cases where we're going to want people to come to the committee to provide engagement or to bring board members into focus groups so we can hear directly. Because it may make perfect sense when you hear from impacted parties or from students because of the examples that are used or, you know, how things are framed that may not, in a staff summary, get conveyed. So I'm looking for a little more robust board engagement in sort of the big policy where there's sort of values at stake or maybe different potential paths that we could take.
Rita, you're on mute.
Okay, can you hear me now? Okay, sorry. I have a very slow internet, so sorry. Everything takes four times longer than it should. So I just want to piggyback on the two comments. So it seems to me that several people have mentioned this already, that not every policy is going to require or demand the same level of community engagement. Some policies, either new policies or revisions, are going to be pretty technical. In which case, you know, we wouldn't necessarily need a, you know, a full-on community engagement process. Others really are going to require full-on community engagement. And then there's going to be policies everywhere in between. So one of the things that I think has been difficult to date is that our analysis of how much community engagement is necessary for a particular policy has been pretty fluid. And it's often changed over time. So we started off with relatively little and then decided, oh, wait, we need way more. So let me put this in the form of a question. How does this user guide accommodate different levels of community engagement, policy by policy? And at what point is that decision made and by whom?
Shanice, do you want to take this one? I mean, I think, I'll just say off first, I think that will be determined by Phase One, which is why it's Phase One. And maybe Shanice and I can get together and think about what that looks like for the committee and what we could bring forward at an early, early time. Just so that you're not getting all of this at the end. I have to think about that a little bit more, but.
I think, just to add on to that, Rachel, when the draft of this was brought now several months ago to the superintendent's leadership team, there was quite a bit of discussion about how to flex, to expand or contract this process based on the needs of a particular policy. I think to the point of all three board members, you need to have visibility and weigh in on that because ultimately, the engagement is the thing that informs your decision. So staff could come with a point of view. And I think the staff, subject matter experts who presumably are engaging in the community that accesses that policy were at least, at least a big chunk of it, one would hope, would have some point of view. And Shanice will have a point of view and bring her extra expertise. But I think bringing that recommendation to the committee would make sense. We, at the end of the day, this is in furtherance of your work. And we want to be sure you have what you need. Shanice, I don't know if you have anything else?
Yeah, of course. And I also want to name a critical part of this core team does involve Danny Ledesma. As we make sense of the folks in this space who might bring their expertise together in Phase One. The, I, you know, represent the engagement team alongside these good folks in relationship with Danny. And I would concur with Rachel saying Phase One is the space and where we would want to gauge the level of impact to students or teachers or folks in the district to make sense of what engagement should look like. And I think the absence of the user guide may play a role in clarity, in a lack of clarity or inconsistency that folks have experienced in the past. So I would look to this tool as something that might answer or provide some solutions to some of the things we're grappling with in addition to looking at, I think there are some inevitable nuances. But our team and my contributions with the engagement slice, I think, will be kind of coupled with perspectives that our policy experts are bringing, including the folks like Rachel and Liz, who will ultimately are all putting our brains together to make sense of what level of impact a policy might have. So the, an example that comes to mind is the meals, kind of district staff and how we pay for meals in particular, that might not be a huge community engagement focus for a policy like that. And in kind of using our work group space, but that is a prep, kind of a prep space before these policy meetings is kind of a collective area where we will get together and review policies that might be coming from down the line from OSBA or just being, having an intent to be revised. So hopefully, that does clarify some of the lingering questions. And I would just offer that this user guide might be a tool or a resource as a result of some of these things that we're grappling with and inconsistencies and questions that we might have. And my assumption is that this committee will have great knowledge well in advance of a policy under review before you're looking at the final product of all engagement that takes place. And so we'll also be working with our staff leads, our staff experts to make sure we're documenting and archiving each step of that process and keeping it all in one place. And I think that will help with consistency as folks continue to present and come forward to the policy committee.
I wanted to ask a follow-up question. In this user guide, it includes, like when it references policy, it also references administrative directives. Typically, that's been under the purview of like the superintendent and his staff. Are we now expecting them to have community engagement around that?
Around administrative, this committee?
No, around writing, around writing the administrative directives.
Well, the policy committee that we're in right now will be reviewing policy. And the superintendent reviews and approves ADs. Now, there may be times when those things coincide. But generally speaking, the superintendent is the approver of administrative directives. And so this user guide wasn't intended to do anything but align how you go about the process of revising something.
And I think, Rachel, what I would add is sometimes a policy change will trigger a need for an administrative directive change. And the engagement will have been done at the policy level and it's flowing through to the administrative directive. But there may be an administrative directive that needs engagement. And so this user guide is to make the thought process about that be at the front end of the work, not the back end. So I think, I think much of the time, the administrative directives are modified in response to the policy change or a statutory change. But I wouldn't rule out that there's an AD that's getting drafted or amended that would benefit with some community engagement. So it's not a mandate, but it's a process, it informs the process.
So I would just say, historically, when I was a parent activist, I've got a number of scars from pushing for a policy change only to see the AD totally screwing us over. So I appreciate the question, Jackson. And I do think, the other thing that would happen is an AD would be written that looked good and then changed in the dead of night with no notice. So some kind of transparency around that. I know we have some transparency there. But just some clarity on when ADs are changed, what the public announcement is at a minimum of that changing would be important going forward.
I was just going to say, there's a new process, Scott, that Rachel has that when the ADs are done, then who they get distributed out to, including the board?
Yeah, yeah. I thought that there had been a change, and thank you.
Yeah, so whenever an AD is approved, I send out a notification to the board. And I also send out notification to all of the union presidents. Just, this is not included in the user guide. And I know we need to kind of move on, Rita. But we're also working with communications to develop, you know, another paragraph or two in this user guide about at the end of the adoption or approval during an AD, what is your communication plan? And we're going to be asking staff leads to take their community engagement plan and work with Karen Worstein to develop a communication plan at the end of the process. So that if you've engaged these five groups throughout this process, you'll then be communicating out to them at the end. So that's not yet included. We're still meeting and talking about that, but it will be, it will be a part of this user guide.
But the communication, the expectation of development of a communication plan early in a more generic sense always already exists. Like, your communication plan should be part of your front-end planning in addition to the execution of that at the end, right?
The part of the discussions with Karen and developing a plan is to target so that our audiences, so that we know, you know, the people who are going to be impacted the most by the changes, whatever changes are being made, will get notice of it.
Thank you. I can feel the healing of my scars already.
So one, can I make just one other general comment about the guide? And I don't, I don't know how people would access or be told about it. But it seems like our policy, our development of policies allows any number of people to draft policies, like a community member can, a board member can. And if I were like new to PPS or new to the central office, I might read this and think policies are just written by staff. And so I don't know if it's in the preamble. There's something that just references that policy proposals can come from a whole host of places. And I would expect if the policy committee and the board decides to work on them, that they would then go through this process. But it seems like we just, it would be useful to acknowledge at the. But it seems like we just, it would be useful to acknowledge at the front end that policy drafts can come in in a variety of different ways. They don't just start at the staff level or just with the, or the policy committee or the board.
Certainly, I, I agree with you that that's what the policy on policies says. So wherever you think that needs to be stated again, we can do that.
Just seems at the beginning, just to give it like a framework.
Cause I'm not sure this, yeah, I mean, I, I, I wouldn't, it would, this, the, this user guide and engagement plan, again, are in furtherance of the board's work, which, which has various interaction with who it brings, but I want to be sure we're framing it. I, I wouldn't want a community member to think that they have to suddenly figure this stuff out and check all the boxes on that plan. It is it, it is designed to be a support tool.
Actually, that's not quite what I meant. That's not quite what I meant, because I wasn't thinking that either. I was thinking like a, a community member could draft a policy or a board member could draft policy and then get it into the process. Not that they would have to go through this in order to oppose it, but more policy concepts could come in a whole variety of different forms before you get to, you know, step, phase one.
Absolutely.
Yes, I, maybe a statement on the board policy page to that effect. Um, if you have an idea for a policy change, feel free to email Director Moore. Uh, or even if you want to draft some policy, feel free and forward that to the policy committee. You know, something along those lines that um, allows uh the public, including students to go from anything from, I have an issue with this to, and here's how it should be written exactly.
Okay, so um, I, I, I want to bring this discussion to a close so we can move on to other things, but um but I also wanted to mention a couple of things. Um, so first, um, I'm, I'm very hopeful that having this um, kind of already thought through is gonna, is gonna produce more um better quality and more um efficient and effective that, you know, I think it's gonna help everybody do the work um that needs to be done to make sure that we're, we're making good policies. Um, so thank you for everybody's work on it. Um, um, I think this is really gonna be helpful. Um, I would say before we leave it, um if I could make a couple of friendly suggestions about um things that could be added that I think might help. Uh, the first one is, and this is probably in the introduction. Um, I, I think it's important to, to note that whenever we're doing this policy work um, of necessity, we're having to balance comprehensive community engagement with timely um revision, you know, timely changes. Um, eh, eh, so if we could just acknowledge that upfront, I think that that might help sort of set the stage for all of this. And also, um, my understanding is that the intention is to have the subject matter expert kind of um be the primary drivers of the community engagement process with the community engagement office providing um assistance. Um, I'm not sure that comes through in the words here. Um, and I think that's been a, that's been in um an ambiguous principle um to date. So it, it might be helpful to spell it out a little bit more in here. Um, but anyway, um, I'm, I'm grateful for everybody who worked on this. I know it's been Rachel's been working on this for a long time. And um, and I'm, I'm hoping that this will make it, this will clarify um for everybody involved, uh how we're gonna move this, uh this work forward. So thank you, everybody.
And I just want to say, Rita, that Shanice and Danny have also worked on this for a long time as well. The, there'd been a lot of consultation among all three of them.
So I, my understanding is that um Shanice and Danny and Rachel and I think, and I don't know who else, um have been working on this pretty pretty diligently since, what, February? Um, even during the COVID, so um, I know it's been, I know it's been rough.
Oh, I'm happy to.
Thank you to everybody.
Happy to almost have it done.
I'll bet. Um, okay, so I want to move on to the next thing, which is the um preservation, maintenance and disposition of district real property. Um, and we have some uh requests on the table that um, that are um that are suggesting uh that we, we may need to develop some overall criteria uh that will guide decision-making around um any um any changes to lease arrangement, um responses to emergency situations. Um, so we're not gonna talk about the specifics of um any requests that have been made that are kind of prompting this discussion. But um, we do need to uh, in, in order to respond in a timely fashion to those requests, um, the board and the district have to establish uh standing criteria that would be used to determine when and whether um any any difference in treatment of lessies um would be uh, would be appropriate. Um, so I'm gonna kick it off to Liz, are you? And correct anything I said that may be inaccurate.
I, I think you uh, you teed it up very well. Um, but it's important for the board to think about the criteria it's gonna use as it's making decisions about different tenants and different property. Um, so that it's transparent and um equitable and um uh compliant, that's what I would say. So I think the um the, the opportunity for the, I, I think the, right now for this committee is to surface some criteria that, that um are the kinds of things you think are important in deciding whether, let me, let me just back up. The baseline metric in, in real estate transactions for the district is market rates and maximizing financial return to the district. So this is articulating criteria for uh deviating from that baseline. And what are, the real question is, what are the things that are important to uh the board in in considering those requests? When might the requests be of a certain type or in service of um, a certain cause, values or community where we would, the district would um think that a below-market term. We could talk about rents, but this will apply to other terms besides rent. But I think rent is, can be uh one way to think about it. Um, and, and it, it's a question of, of values, I think, and priorities um that may come ahead of dollars to the district. So Rita, I don't, uh, we didn't orchestrate this. I'm happy to just let the board members uh have some organic discussion. I'm happy to throw out some ideas that have been discussed um in preparation of the meeting. Um, staff have gathered some in a, in a brainstorming effort, not a necessarily a recommendation. Um.
Hey, hey Liz? This is, this is Director Consta. I'm sorry, I'm not on um video right now, but if you could just speak to the language that is already in the policy regarding market rate, which says um unless the board makes an express finding that the disposition of district property for less than market rate confer significant benefit to the district and the community, it serves, the district shall pursue maximum market value for any sale, lease or disposition under this policy. Do you want to talk about why that language um is inadequate um for us to consider the present request?
Um, sure. I think it, it tells you that it's possible and it tells you that there's a determination to be made, but it doesn't tell the community or the board what the criteria are, right? And so um, it is, it is my recommendation that there be a more explicit discussion of the criteria in play um, in considering requests as they come in. So it, it, it can be uh free-formed, but I don't, I think that is not best practice and I think it does not set up the board to consistently necessarily consistently administer that policy. Does that help, Amy? I want to make sure I be answered.
I just wanted to direct that, I just wanted to address that directly because that provision already is in there.
Right, so it, it is in there. It tells you you can do it. And of course, the board can waive policy or change policy anytime. But it, it doesn't tell, it, it doesn't ensure that there's an alignment or consistency about how to consider those requests and what criteria might be in play.
Well, it seems like there's sort of uh, one of the big framing criteria may be different economic conditions. So there could be uh something like the pandemic, which is, you know, affecting a lot of entities. It could be something, uh like the criteria, I'm just thinking about it, the criteria could be something that a trigger would be when you have some sort of external event that's impacting lots of different entities, a recession, a pandemic. Um, it could be something specific to um the, the group, they have some sort of catastrophic financial event that ha- that happens. Um, in which case it may be that other parties aren't, don't have the same set of financial conditions, but that particular party um has a, a reason and maybe a reason that the board would um find that maybe they get less than um, they paid less than market rate for something or that we'd sort of waive the conditions of fair market value. Um, and then the third could potentially be PPS has something financially that, a re- a reason why it would offer a pro- a property at below market rate. Um, and that could also be a financial reason. So it seems like there may be for each of those, like a different sets of different criteria that would be important um to consider. Like if, say the, you're in a recession, it may be you know, if the, you know, unemployment rate is over X amount or um, you know, some other economic indicator that that's sort of a trigger that maybe a crush of properties that, that you might want to take a look at it. But that seems, and then there's things that are unique to and a specific entity. Anyway, does that, that's like one set of criteria and then there's a whole other set of criteria about what that would look like, how, by how much. So anyway, that, just one set of framing, I think we should think about. Cause it's easy to, to, if you just have one in, one um entities asking for it, but if you get I mean, we're, we've got lots of properties and lots of, you know, uh, it would be easy for a lot of people to come to us with a, we'd like a reduction of our lease, just by the nature of who we lease to. So it seems like we should think of it in sort of different buckets.
Can, can I respond to that? Um, so um, I think ultimately the wording that we use is going to have to be very carefully uh considered. Um, and I guess I, I feel compelled to uh, to reference what how the current policy came to be. Um, and this is from 2018, I think. Yeah, 2018. Um, and um, this is a very substantially revised policy governing um PPS's um r- r- real estate or approach to real estate and property. Um, and w- when we made the revision, um, we included um some pretty significant um kind of guardrails um on the conditions that would how do I put this? Um, I think that, I think the policy revisions were intended to um provide some limitation on um PPS's uh P- PPS looking at individual properties as one-offs. And instead um shift the approach to um district-wide and long-term. And, and I can tell you where I was coming from when I was asking for some of these changes a few years ago. Um, I think PPS uh historically, in the time that I've been paying attention, um, I, I think PPS has made some um very short-sighted decisions around um, around its own properties, uh both in terms of sales and leases. Um, in terms of length of time, the, you know, fiduciary um uh, elements of, of the arrangements. And um, and I think it has created uh a situation where PPS is constrained in its ability to serve students by um past decisions that did not take long-term considerations into account. So um, I think it's important to acknowledge that upfront before we start talking about criteria. Because I, I believe that we should continue to have that long-term perspective and to ensure that whatever criteria we come up with or uh any diversion from this overall policy needs to be likewise um consistent with this, that the focus on the district-wide and long-term. So, there you go.
The uh, oh, sorry.
So go, no, go ahead.
Okay, I just um had a question and I was, um, is there sort of a because I, I know that we've, or it's, it's already been talked about as um uh, the specific criteria are gonna be discussed um later, but is there sort of an application process um e- either in the current policy or that's being considered um for certain entities to um to sort of, well, to ask if they can have their, their rates lowered? Um, and forgive me if this has already been talked about, but.
No, uh Parker, they, we've just received an email, a written request from a tenant. So there isn't a more formal process than that as currently defined. And that's how these recent requests have played out.
Okay.
Two, two tenants at the moment.
Okay, and, and that's just, or that's been deemed um adequate for, for the current situation and their current needs.
I think that's a great question. But go ahead, Liz, sorry.
No, no, um, we, we have also, and Dana, correct me if I'm wrong, we've had other tenants inquiries uh during the COVID period as well. They have been resolved in other ways, but there are tubes that are still open.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
So the, the thing that I was gonna say is every um every dollar that we defer taking in from rent or lease or sale is a dollar that we don't have for our students, um, which we feel sorely. So if we were to give up a dollar, we need to be very clear about the benefits on the other side. That we would be indirectly that we would be indirectly, that our students would be indirectly receiving. Every hundred thousand is a teacher to, put it bluntly and, and, and then of course, if it's, if it's more like a sale, that has to do with, you know, our capital account. Um, and how that money gets used. And we all know where we are with building maintenance and any number of other things underfunded.
I agree with that and Rita with what you were saying, that I don't think we should tinker with the, foundational changes that we made to this policy that really lay out a bias toward our sort of long-term interests of, um, maintaining flexibility by, by holding on to properties. I do think, Julia, when you're talking about, um, just general, uh, ways to frame it, I do think one of the, one of the areas that I would like to address is what's already called out in the policy, as, as a criterion really is, um, the communities that they serve. So, so who are the communities being served in our buildings, um, even when they, it's under the auspices of some general partner?
So one of the things, um, just, I guess I'm going to rip off of two of Amy's comment, Rita's comment, is, um, I think we might want to consider different criteria for rent or lease reductions versus sales of buildings. Because the former likely would be more, I think episodic and be tied to something, uh, maybe, uh, but in this particular case, like tied to the recession or the pandemic or some, something happened that, like they, they, an entity entered into a lease agreement with us and now they would like different terms. And to me, that's, I think those seem to be like economic triggers or something like that. But it seems that the conversation about the sale, it's different because the community, um, that exists at this time or who it's sold to may change. And I'm just thinking about some of the buildings. So let's just take, um, Collins view. Which now has a, a high school from another, is that Collins view? Yes. A high school from another district, but it's within our own district. And fortunately, that was a lease, not a sale. Because at a certain point in time, based on demographics, we might want that building and that property back. So it seemed, to, to me, so it seems like I think maybe we might want to think about two sets of criteria because to me, they, they seem like they'd be different and, and community and a sale just seems longer term, way more permanent than, hey, you know, because of the pandemic, we couldn't hold our three largest fundraisers this year. And, you know, across the board, we're cutting like everything by X amount. And, you know, can we have a lease reduction for, for one year? But to me, that seems different than disposition of property, which I think has a, has a different set of criteria that may be involved. And just because it's more permanent, that it'd be a higher standard than a sort of one-year rent reduction that we may give somebody.
I think that makes sense to separate those clearly.
And I think the existing policy, the existing policy says that shit sales should happen only on rare occasions. And, my personal preference, my personal belief is that, public property should not be sold to a private entity. Period. Short of some extraordinary situation, truly extraordinary situation. And, um, I would like, I was hoping that this policy would enshrine that principle. Perhaps the wording there needs to be a little stronger in order to, um, to make it actually enshrined. But, um, so yes, I agree, um, different, different criteria for sale versus lease arrangement.
Also, this is a question for maybe Dana or Liz. So, say, we sell it to a public entity that seems to have an aligned mission. And they then decide down the road, like, oh, we're not going to, we're not going to use it for that purpose. So actually it doesn't make sense. We're going to get it out of our inventory. Which, you know, somewhat has happened with the Washington High School property where the Parks Bureau was going to put a East Portland Community Center there. The neighborhood embraced that and in fact lobbied the district, like keeping it a public space. But then ultimately they backed away from that plan. And I don't know if, in a sales, it, it's, I don't want to suggest me do this, but I'm just wondering the possibility. Like if you sold it to a public entity in one of those rare cases, could a term of the sale be that if they didn't use it for the intended purpose, that the district had the right to purchase it back?
You could do a right of first refusal. I mean, we have that in some of our lease agreements. You could do that.
Okay. Sell in the first place.
Okay. I'm, I'm just saying, we're talking about general criteria. Cause, cause, cause maybe one of the criteria is, say Rita, you, you don't ever sell to a private entity. Well, that assumes that you might sell to a public entity. But how do you stop the, like, uh, sell-throughs? So I'm just saying if that's,
Yeah.
I mean, if you really want to stop it, you either, if you, if you couldn't prevent them from reselling it, you wouldn't sell it to public entities either.
I, I could get behind that.
Claire, you know, another thing that I thought was interesting in further consideration of this policy, how it's amended, is that there's some fairly clear language in here about our responsibilities for the maintenance of our properties, looking at that side of this policy. And I think there's a few cases that could be made where we are not meeting our obligations for this policy. Like for example, Smith School. I mean, probably, I mean, a lot of cases. That's kind of the most extreme.
Before Kellogg.
Yeah. Yeah. Where we are not meeting our obligations. So that, you know, there might, there might be a way for us to think about how do we put into practice evaluation of our portfolio relative to that, um, obligation that's, that's, um, codified in policy. Cause right now I think there's a total disconnect there.
Isn't that one of the things that the long-range facility plan, strategic plan is supposed to address?
Well, I think there's just a basic policy about taking care of your property.
There's very little language in the policy.
If you don't take care of the roof, you're not taking care of your property. End of, end of story.
Well, and so I, if this is addressed to me, I just want to make sure you're asking me the question. Certainly it's, uh, maintaining our buildings has been something that was put on, you know, some of the, um, more capital, type repairs, uh, were put on hold for a long time in this district. And certainly our review of our long-term planning process that has started with our facilities team will bring forward areas that we need to get to in, in the future 10 years. And so leased buildings are also, um, when we're leasing out a building, we have a responsibility of maintaining roofs and plumbing, et cetera, just as if we owned it, if, if we were using it operationally. So.
And the policy, the policy does have budgetary constraints as a reality in there, uh, in terms, so it is definitely, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly, Amy, that it is absolutely a stated, um, policy of the board. But it also recognizes that there may not be enough funds to do all of it at once. I think is how I read that language.
Liz, do you think it would make sense to, um, pull a disposition of property, sale of property out and have it be a loan area? And/or was that considered when this policy was revised in Plan O P?
I think that policy was revised, uh, in the main about the sale of property. It was a revision of excess property, sales and dispositions. And it was modified to be broader in terms of lease interests, as I recall it. And I may be, uh, my recall, I've not gone back to look at the prior version. I do think it makes sense, uh, when you're talking about the criteria for below-market considerations, that there are some considerations that are unique to sale, um, that are different than, than rent payments. So I think making sure the considerations are distinguished. Do they work in both categories? Does there need to be something different for, uh, a sale, I think is a worthy distinction.
So is there a, is there a connection between where the rent for a building goes and any maintenance we have to do for that building? Including kind of anticipating, uh, you know, in five years, this thing is going to need a new roof. So we're going to build up, use that rent to build up our maintenance fund for that so that we meet that obligation in a timely fashion. And, uh, a corollary question for any mothballed building that we've had.
I'll have to look to the real estate team about how they collect and allocate rents and how that relates to capital improvements. I don't know the answer to that.
My understanding is that all goes into the general fund. And so, um, then there's obviously some funds that come back for maintenance, both on the construction side and the operations and maintenance side. We do have now our facility condition assessment and we will be, there'll be a capital committee prioritizing that work so that we really understand what our most critical issues are. But depending on, to speak to the lease part of it, it, what we do for maintenance depends on the terms of the lease. Certainly something like a roof would be, that's a capital item that would be our responsibility. But I don't know how, and maybe there's a way, Claire, man, no, but how we would take the rents and separate them out into a different, a separate budget that was meant just for capital improvements of the buildings that we lease.
Certainly that's possible. I'm not sure if that's necessarily a recommendation. I think it's best for us to look at overall what our building, um, needs are and making a, a plan accordingly, rather than separating out the leased buildings. I think, I think we have that process that's just starting. And so, um, look forward to further discussion as we, um, take a look at the whole district.
Yeah, I, I, I understand that, uh, Claire. But also I think there's, there's some maintenance we can kind of kick the tin can down the road for a year or two or even three. But if releasing a space, um, there's, we're legally contracted. There's a legal contract around maintaining it. And, and so, I, I, I'd like to leave the question on the table about whether we should be dedicating at least a portion of the rent into some kind of dedicated maintenance fund.
And just a technical point, some, some leases are triple net so that the tenant is responsible for repairs too. So there are multiple categories of leases, just as we're talking about that.
So can we hold, can we hold off on this discussion? Cause it, um, it's considerably weightier than, than the policy level. So, um, and we, we have a whole other agenda item that's going to take some time. So I want to make sure that we wrap this up soon. Can, can I, can I draw out a couple of criteria that we might want to think about? Uh, I think we should probably be considering, like what, what is happening inside the building, um, um, by the less, lessies? And prioritize, um, direct connection to the district as opposed to unaffiliated organizations. Um, and probably direct service to, um, PPS students. Within the building. Does that make sense?
I agree with that Rita, and I would, um, I would get even more specific and say that we should probably have specific language, language around, um, charter schools and how we treat charter schools, um, at PPS charters or state char-, you know, charters within our jurisdictional boundaries. So I think it would be good to have some specific language on that. And then I would also like to see criteria elaborating on what's already in the policy that speaks to the community that is served. And, um, really apply our RESJ lens to that and elaborate that in this policy.
Can I, can I just, um, mention that when we're talking about charters, one of the criteria for approval of a charter is fiscal, um, it is, fiscal stability, which includes, um, the ability to, um, to arrange for their own space. So, uh, we, we need to be careful, like if we're going to, we're going to have, we may potentially have two policies that could potentially be in conflict. So we need to make sure that whatever language we use has to be aligned to be consistent across the two policies.
Yeah. I, I don't think, I think that lens could be applied to, um, the charter applications, regardless of where we land on, um, how we treat charters as potential lessies.
So I'm going to, um, agree with some Rita's, um, criteria. I like the affiliated with PPS's, or with PPS or affiliated with PPS students. Uh, I think the, you know, serving, are they providing predominantly historically underserved students? Check or, um, using a eligible for free and reduced lunch. I think on charters, just to draw a finer distinction, well, I, I would view them as especially public, if they have a charter from PPS that they're, they're affiliated with PPS. But then I would add this other layer into it, um, as well on the, the students that they're serving. And I'm just, I, I think I'll, you know, raise it from the, if you look at where the charters are mostly located, they're, you know, um, not all, but almost all on the, uh, east side. And that we start running into, well, when enrollment was declining, it was like fine to have charters in like a, a former neighborhood school. But then when we needed the space, then we had a, then we had kids not being able to go to, having to go a long distance to go to their neighborhood school. So I think we should look at like, not all charters serve, um, the same students and using the, um, racial equity and social justice lens to me would be an important filter to overlay on the public charter. Cause otherwise we could be committing ourselves to potentially eight, eight buildings or however many charters we have.
We only have a handful of charters that are in our buildings, not very many. Most of our charters have their own independent lease.
But if they knew they could get one of our buildings. But if they knew, they could get one of our buildings. I mean, this is, so having been on the charter committee over the, over the years, especially when a lot of them got approved in the early 2000s, when state law, like essentially districts had very little choice but to approve them, one of the things was they all were asking for, and there was a very aggressive position by the State Charter School Association that districts should provide buildings. So I would just be, again, I think it's good to include them, but I would want to have the same filter that you have, like, who are the students who are benefiting from that charter versus a broad entitlement.
I do, I do think you want to be careful that you're, the same way that criteria are helpful to distinguish between tenants, you want to make sure that you're not creating then a need to do the same thing for why you're treating some charters differently than others in terms of subsidizing rent, because they're also a tenant. So you just want to keep those in mind as your, which, which playing field you're on and are, how are like entities being treated differently, or what are the reasons for them to be treated differently if they are?
So, can I get in the last comment, please? Just wanted to thank staff for the three examples that you sent along from New York, Seattle, and Eugene. And that was, that was interesting. It, it looks to me like New York, there's basically no exceptions, as I read that, unless like it goes to a vote kind of thing. Seattle had some specific exceptions and a real matrix for how to, how that would impact the actual lease terms. But it was interesting how they defined those, seemed to specifically exclude public or private schools. It was, they had a whole list of student support activities, and it was conspicuous that they did not include charters or private schools. It was supporting programs. And, and I'm trying to remember what Eugene said. So I, I think one of the options here is that we just don't view exceptions. And, and I think, I think we, we should leave that as an option on, on the table.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna draw this to a close, because we've only got 20 minutes left. Liz, did you get enough to start crafting some proposed language?
I, I think we got enough for, direction for you all to consider and chew on at the next meeting. We'll all, so we'll bring that in the form, we'll redline it into the existing policy. I just want to, heads up to the committee, there are also unrelated to this topic entirely are going to be a couple proposed staff cleanup edits, I would say revisions, that as we've implemented the policy over the last two years, we realized where it may not be working as smoothly as intended. I, I don't think they're going to be highly complex, but they certainly, you need to discuss them and make sure they're what you intend as well, but we can talk through that. So we will, we will come in three weeks with a redline policy.
Okay, okay, cool. Thank you. Okay, I want to move on to the last agenda, which is the, a review of the annual report on the formal public complaints, and start a discussion about how the complaint policy has been playing out on the ground over the last two years. Two years ago, we made some pretty substantial revisions to the complaint policy, and it's been being implemented, and I think after two years, we're in a position where we ought to think about, do we, do we, you know, what's working, what's not working, what could be improved, and kind of where we should go from here. So who's gonna, Stephanie, are you gonna start yourself?
I'll, I'll kick us off, but then turn it over to Lydia. So as the policy states, every year, we pull together data and trends from the school year around the formal complaint policy, the types, the number of complaints, how many get appealed, and to what level. And then this year, like in years past, our complaint coordinator, Lydia Lopez-Gamboa, prepared that for you all and sent it to the board in July at the end of the fiscal year. So I will turn it over to Lydia to give you the high point, and then we'll open it up for question and answer.
Thank you, Stephanie. Good afternoon. My name is Lydia Lopez-Gamboa, and I'm the executive assistant to, the executive to the staff, Stephanie Soden, and I also oversee the formal complaint process to ensure that the district adheres to the procedures set forth by the formal public complaints policy. As Stephanie mentioned, we provided you with a copy of the end of the year report. It was shared with school board, the superintendent, and his leadership team. The formal complaint policy was adopted in November of 2014, and it has been amended twice, I believe. And on the report, it shows an increase on the number of formal complaints that are filed every school year. It continues to be an appropriate avenue for families to resolve concerns when informal process is not successful. It has also provided staff with the opportunity to find ways that it can improve the experience of families, most notably providing training for staff who respond to complaints, so that communications are authentic and lead with empathy and compassion. As the complaints were processed during the 2019, 2020 school year, questions emerged that are not explicitly answered in the PPS board policy or the associated administrative directive. And in an effort to provide clarity, we recommend that the board policy and governance committee consider the following recommendations. Number one, the board policy on page four, section D. Number two, could provide clarity as to what the district means by assistance in preparing a written complaint. For example, I had a couple of complainants who thought that the district would be able to provide them with legal assistance. So that's one. Number two, the policy could be more specific as to who can file a formal complaint. One example is if a non-resident of Portland Public Schools who has concerns about the district, would that person be able to file a formal complaint? And last one is, the district received numerous formal complaints submitted by the same person that were duplicate or repeat of previously resolved complaints. It would be helpful to update the policy to specify that once the board has ruled on a subject matter, the complainant cannot file a new formal complaint with the same concern or concerns. Stephanie, do you have anything to add to that?
I don't. I think we'll open it for questions or comments. Thank you, Lydia.
Thank you.
Can I just make one request? I'm getting, I'm getting a lot of background noise. If, if you're not speaking, could you make sure that you're muted? Any questions?
So I have a couple of questions, and a couple places, just looking through it based on now that the, not that the policy's been put to practice, since this, this was a policy where we spent a lot of time on in 2017 and 18, but a couple places where there'd be some additional changes, like under D five retaliation against any person who files or participates, it's like retaliation by whom? So I think we all thought district staff or, you know, the people that were within the span of control for the district. But there's things in here that I think are smaller changes, but I guess one question I had is, with, one change we've had this past year is we don't longer have an ombudsman, and sort of what impact that is, has that had? Is it just mean that those people who actually use the services of the ombudsman now just hadn't have any support, or have they gone into the public complaint process? Or did it, did they actually get their issues resolved at a school level? And it just, you know, I don't think we, you just have a staff person leave and like, what happened to the body of their work? So I'd, I'd be interested in a little analysis of that, it's like, hey, these are the types of complaints, you know, the categories of complaints, and, you know, these ones in this category all now are going to the town line coordinator, or these ones are going to, you know, some of the community engagement team. So getting a little bit of analysis on that, and then the second piece that I think would really be really good practice is for us to get a, you know, after the whole process is over, you know, what feedback do we, have we got from people who engage in our complaint process? And, well, I think people who go all the way to the final vote by the board, obviously they felt that it hasn't gotten resolved, which is why they've continued it. And so a question would be, so why did they feel compelled to continue the process? What, what, what wasn't tied off for them? Was it something policy? Was it a process? To just get a better understanding for that, having talked to some of the parents over the last couple of years who went through the process, there were things that they said, like, hey, this, this was super supportive, I felt heard, you know, this change came out of the process, even though it went all the way to the board, I feel, I feel good about, you know, what happened. And others, like, hey, I had no idea what was happening in the process, or, you know, it would have been helpful if this had happened. So I think getting feedback from, even though it may appear to be critical, I think some of it will be very useful, because the point is to try and, I think, resolve things in a way that we may not agree with them, but they don't, that they feel like they had an opportunity within our process to raise an issue of concern, and potentially get part of it addressed. So those would just be two, like, sort of more feedback loop type things, or process, continuous process improvement?
I think, this is kind of to Julia's point, but one of the things I've been thinking a lot about with the complaint process is that, you know, in the policy itself, it makes very clear that the, the best way to resolve school-based concerns is closest to the experience and closest to the student. And so I think we've spent a lot of time, like, on this policy and with the process when things are appealed to the board, but we really haven't spent enough time, in my opinion, downstream in supporting how parents and families are received when they raise school-based concerns. And I think that this has taken us to a place where the experience is often unsatisfactory to the parents, probably because building administrators don't have enough guidance about how they should be responding, what a, what a, what a healthy process is to respond to concerns that parents raise. And Julia, this gets to your point a little bit about the void of the ombudsman, because some things were, did benefit from that role. So it's unsatisfactory a, a lot for families, but it's also really unsatisfactory for administrators, because there's a missing link, where there, we skip this step of like authentic conversation and healing at the most immediate level, at the school-based level, and it all starts getting into this overly formalistic process that is frustrating and feels unsatisfying to everybody involved, including our administrators who really sincerely want to just try to resolve whatever's not working right for a kid. And, you know, I think that, I think that we could benefit from, you know, some type of structured support from the Office of, of School Performance, so that there's actually maybe like a mediator embedded within that department, who is, you know, it's different than an ombudsman, and part of, part of what was both positive and negative about the way the ombudsman role was week before was that it was independent and they reported to the board, but if there was someone that could be more responsive, who's really within the Office of School Performance, they're, one of their great values is that they're connected to the teams that can actually make a difference for the kids and families and can probably do it pretty quickly. And I suspect from conversations that I've had, that there's support for that type of role and position within the Office of School Performance, partly because it would just be a good investment, because right now, we've got a lot of really, really valuable people who spend an inordinate amount of time tangled up in these overly formal processes, instead of people who are able to sit down, have a conversation, have a restorative process, really figure out what's at the heart of a parent's concern, and, and be faithful to what we say is the heart of our values around this complaint process, which is revolving things, resolving things at the most immediate level, at the school level. So I, I would like to work toward creating a mechanism that, that builds that in somehow.
If I could respond, I know there's other board committee members who will want to talk, but it's as if we have a mind meld, Amy, Director Constan, what you're saying, we, we do continue to encourage that, that issues be addressed at the school level closest to the problem. And I think Deputy Superintendent Quayar, as Chief of Schools and as Deputy, has done a really good job building in a support team of principal supervisors and above to, to support administrators with this process. It's not, we're not there yet, but it's a lot better than when I first got here. I think they feel the structure and the leadership of that side of the organization has really been built up to serve as sort of customer service delivery. We've also put in, so, so we are working on a formal complaints training for administrators and folks from the OSP team, like you mentioned, and also they've gone through some communications training around how to write, how to respond to concerns, how to listen authentically, how to communicate with empathy. So there are some efforts underway. I totally agree with what you were saying. And then we've talked about creating a new position in OSP, Office of School Performance, that would be some sort of family resolution coordinator. So they would have, they would have an eye to what Lydia and the complaints process is, but they would hopefully get to some of these issues informally. So it's different than an ombudsman. It's within the OSP team, but it can really track and issues and work with administrators and their supervisors above them on these issues. So that is a position we are creating. So I just wanted the committee to know that.
Did you just say that is a position we are creating, like it's happening now?
Yes.
Sweet. So one thing that's worth noting is the ombudsman didn't report to the board, they reported, didn't they report to your office of duty?
Yes, correct.
So it was a staff reporting, not a report to the board.
Right.
That's best practice.
So, go ahead, Scott, sorry.
Yeah. So real quickly, I wanted to reaffirm Julia's point of getting some kind of customer satisfaction survey out there, and that includes both process and content. You guys treated me great and screwed over my kid. Or vice versa. I, I ended up getting what I wanted, but, and I wanted to thank Lydia, who's our public face, and I know has taken some abuse over the years. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I hope you've gotten a humongous raise.
Thank you.
I better stop there.
So we're, we're rapidly running out of time. I want to make sure that the students get an opportunity to ask any questions. I want to make sure that the students get an opportunity to ask any questions.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I hope, uh, you've gotten that humongous raise.
Any questions? Um, I, I have watched the video feed, so speak up if you have something to say.
I think they were both shaking their heads and I personally have just been listening and, uh, I, I pretty much agree with, with everything that's been said.
Okay. Okay.
So Rita, Rita, one thing, um, just, this isn't part of the complaint process, um, or the policy per se, but, um, having, especially when things, just having a, a document that kind of runs through what the actual process is. And so, like, I, we don't, we only see when it gets to the step that gets to the board, but even then it's like, is it public? Is it private? Who's in, you know, or is an executive session? Who's in the room? What's in the range that the board can do? It's sort of a mystery and I think, and not intentionally so, but, I mean, it's, and I think, at least for me, as I'm going to speak myself as a board meeting, especially in this virtual world, I'm not sure like, hey, am I in an executive session or if there's a student involved, like, how do we talk about them? So one of the things that I would just encourage so that both the board and the complainants have the same understanding of like, here are the discrete sets of the, steps of the process. Um, so that, because like, hey, I, I think sometimes people get wound up around the process, um, and then that makes their complaint more urgent or the resolution less satisfactory because, I mean, it's, people get anxious about engaging the process, especially when you get to the very end and it's the board. Um, so that would just be a, a process improvement that's not policy related.
Sure, I appreciate that. Julia and Lydia can speak to this if she wants to. I, um, and thank you Director Bailey, um, for commenting on Lydia. Lydia is, um, such a friendly and responsive complaints coordinator. Um, she gets back to people when she's on vacation. Um, she is always monitoring and not only really quick to respond and acknowledge something from a complainant, but also keeps everyone on their toes, getting the deadlines met. Um, but she also does have quite a bit of back and forth. Uh, there is back and forth with complainants explaining what the process will be, explaining what the board meeting will look like. We can always build on what we do now to make that clearer. Um, so I appreciate that feedback.
Yeah. I mean, this is, I say, as much, I think for the board of like, this is the, because we get just different complaints and then there's, you know, you might be flipping in and out of executive session, what can we say, what can't we say? I think, as I said, this is just me speaking as a board member, it'd be helpful to have that same information and knowing what their expectation, the expectations are being set with the, the family. Yeah. Um, because I agree, almost every complaint I talk to like raves about Lydia and is like, how often does that happen that the complaint coordinator is like the most popular person in the, in the process? Um, but again, just so we all know what the, kind of the ground rules are.
Thank you, Director Prem Edwards. There's always room for improvement and, um, we have created, uh, uh, you know, a communication between the complainant and us, but, uh, there's always room for, for improvement and, uh, we'll take those and, um, make some adjustments.
Um, and I wanted to say the, I agree with the, uh, appreciate the three points that , uh, staff brought up for, uh, changing to policy or clarifying the policy. I think, uh, yeah, thumbs up. Let's, let's move ahead with, uh, with that.
Um, so we're, we're just about out of time. Um, and, um, if I can make a request, um, so, uh, going forward, thank you for the reports and thank you for all of your work, Lydia.
Yeah. Thumbs up.
You're welcome.
I would, I would not be good in your job. Let me just leave it there. Um, so I, I appreciate you. Um, so for, for future reference, um, I, personally, I think it would be helpful to get a little more narrative attached to the run numbers. Um, because it's, um, you know, it's hard to know, it's hard to interpret what the numbers mean. So, for example, we had a big spike in formal complaints in 2018, 19. Um, so that could either mean, oh boy, you know, things were not good, um, or, oh look, we, PPS finally has a complaint process that I can navigate. So I'm going to put in complaints. Um, one would be not so good, one would be better. So, um, so it would be help, and, and especially since you've got contact with everybody who put in a formal complaint, um, I'm guessing you have a sense of where the trends are. And it would be helpful to get kind of your sense of how things are going, um, and if you can marry your subjective interpretation with an objective numbers, um, now we got something. So, um, uh, and, and I don't even know if this is possible, but, um, I would be very curious to find out, uh, of, of all of the families who have complaints and make them known to somebody in the system, how many of them actually wind up as a formal complaint? As opposed to getting resolved at a much earlier level? Um, and I'm hoping that it's a relatively, I mean, I would assume it's a relatively small percentage of all of the complaints that somebody within PPS hears that, that end up as a formal complaint. Um, but, and, and I don't even know if we keep any numbers on that, but that, it would be useful info. Um, and it would help us identify kind of trends. And, and then I guess the last thing I would say is, um, when we made the changes in this policy, uh, one of the things that, um, I think we explicitly said in the policy, um, I don't have it right in front of me, but, um, I think we wanted to reframe it as, uh, policies help the district get better. They help us identify, you know, problem areas and then, you know, fix them. Um, it would be very, um, I think we, useful, I think, if, um, if we had any examples, you know, in these annual reports, if there's, you know, over the course of a year, if you can really point to instances where, um, a complaint led to some concrete improvement within the district. Um, I think it would be instructive.
Like systemic improvement?
It's systemic improvement, yes, yes. Um, and I think it would, if nothing else, it would make us all feel better that, you know, the, the pain of the complaint process actually has some good payoff, potentially. Um, you know, in the DASAs, that might help. Um, so anyway, um, we're now at 6:04. So, um, I want to open it up again to students. Any, you have any final words? Anybody?
Yeah, one last thing. Um, so this is like a formal complaint process and you guys are discussing how it could be resolved at the, um, school level or maybe by, at the teacher level. Is there a policy regarding how that should function?
Um, I don't think so.
It's, it's hard to legislate, like, good lis, good listening, uh, empathy, um, you know, working together, good minds working together. How do we, how do we make this a win-win? I, but, and that's, yeah, other than, I mean, it's, it's sounds like, uh, like our, uh, good listening, uh, forget the role, uh, titles again. Craig Quellar is working on, you know, we can do some specific training with our administrators on, on how to resolve that.
There, there is a sentence or two in the policy that says, you know, whenever possible, um, issues should be resolved at the lowest possible level, you know, close to the classroom and/or the school as possible. But I think that's the only policy that governs it. Okay, any other, um, okay, so what's going to happen, the next steps now? Um, staff are going to come back with some, um, language suggestions, um, based on the report, your experiences, comments you heard, um, and anything else. Um, and will you have those available for us at the next committee meeting? Okay. Okay. So, um, so three weeks from now, whenever that is, um, Rosandia, the actual date when the next committee meeting is?
Nine fourteen, I think Rita. September fourteenth.
Okay. So, um, so at the next committee meeting, we're going to have, uh, a, a couple of policies that will have actual language revision proposals on the table, right?
So, um, we have at least two policies under consideration. We have, uh, communication strategy, engagement strategies around either of them.
That's an excellent, excellent question, bringing us all the way back to the beginning. Um, and I, I don't know the answer to that. Anybody?
I, I, I think we don't. These were initiated, these were both board requested, um, policies, and I think it'd be fair for staff to come with a proposal to the board about that at, on, at the nine fourteen meeting. This was a conceptual conversation first, but I think the staff can bring that proposal and it can be discussed at the next meeting.
Okay. And, and that'll be, that'll be our first opportunity to, um, to execute on the, uh, this new approach to community engagement and feedback. So, okay, um, anything else for the good of the orders? Are we good? Okay, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody. And, uh, thank, thank you for the song at the beginning, I think.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday Rita.
Happy birthday Rita. So, yeah.
To community engagement and feedback, so, okay.